Do the pledge of allegiance, please. 12:05.
12:05.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll have your microphones to clip on.
We share.
Any corrections to the minutes of the last meeting? I thought they were all right unless I missed anything. Motion to accept minutes.
I move that minutes be accepted as written.
Second. Are we having a meeting in July? Next one. Do we usually take July off or August off?
I'm pretty sure it was usually August from what I remember. At least last year I think we did August.
I don't remember. It depends. What we did was we had it sometime in the middle.
I think we did August last year because of when schools started.
But it is in the bylaws that we meet monthly. So I don't know when that started or how it started.
We can meet, if you want, still meet this time.
I'm trying to get quotes together for the landscaping, so it definitely would help me if we had that meeting that way. If nothing else, we can at least, you know, look forward on that. But we could also do that as a special meeting too, either way.
Well, we could just make one of them a short meeting.
Yeah.
And July 10th would be the second.
Any correspondence, George?
I do have a, this is kind of a fun one. The Massachusetts Board of Libraries just puts out these lovely little blits on, kind of goes over some of the duties and powers and yada yada. So they sent us down a whole big batch of them, so.
Book that was this thick?
Yeah, this is the condensed version.
It's not long online.
Everything is online.
It's a fun little thing. And if there's any particular questions about the, you know, powers, duties, responsibilities, yada yada, the NBLC, which is the Massachusetts Board of Libraries, that you can attend either in person or online as well.
So I tried to sign up for the lecture or whatever it was, a Zoom, which was, I think, two weeks ago Wednesday. And for some reason, probably my lack of technology skills, but I wasn't able to get into it. Tried to email where the invitation came from to see. Do you ever sign on or does anyone ever sign into those Zooms? And is it seamless?
They do have limited seating, so it might have been filled.
Okay.
So, but we can check the next time they have one to see. Try and get you on there.
Thank you.
I've signed on to a recording of it.
Oh, I didn't know they had that.
Record the sessions and then make it available online.
Where did you find the recording?
It's on the same website.
Okay.
NBLC website.
I already forgot the topic, but it was of interest when I first read it.
Yeah, they have a bunch of different ones. There's one that's a general overview on what it means to be a trustee and what you have to do as a trustee. They just did one on collection management and challenges, you know, people bring challenges to having a particular book or topic. The new thing is challenging programming, obviously, with some of the different programs, some of the different towns in Massachusetts. And things like that. So there's a bunch of different ones all over the topics.
Any other correspondence, George?
We kind of have one, but we can bring it up under the new business of the Friends request.
Okay. Director's report.
So May was a fun month.
Wow. I see.
So the door count went back up after a declining April. And it's, it's fun how cyclical it is. So you go back and you start looking at the numbers year over year, month over month. It's, it's fun to see. Our register patron count went up to 4,800 thanks to Bonnie with the school kids. So we had, I'll let her talk about that when we get there. Computer usage went back up again in terms of uses. One of them is currently partially restricted because the first computer, the Microsoft Office, isn't working, but we are working on getting that fixed. It is working completely otherwise. Reference count kind of dipped a little bit, but that's just because the staff has been so tied up with, you know. We're still going through the training when people, if you think about it, basically 75% of the staff is either new or is being retrained now for a new position. So it's a great time. Circulation is at 7,988 for the month of May, which depending how you count the numbers, I have a little bit of a philosophical divergence with Boston, so I count how we do circulation differently than they do. But depending on how June falls out, right now we are currently on track to have the highest circulation year on record. The way that my numbers are different than Boston's numbers is we have our Hoopla digital service. I count that as circulation. Boston counts that as database access. So it still counts the same, it's just the numbers get put in different places. So I have to wait and see at the end of the year whether or not, as far as Boston's concerned, this will be our highest year ever or not. But the way that I do the numbers, it is.
Do they count canopy the same as the?
Yep. So basically canopy and Hoopla, because we pay per use, it's basically a metered access model as opposed to us purchasing quote unquote "an individual title." So because of that, those count as database accesses, kind of like ancestry.com is too. So it still counts in our circulation. It's just where they put the number is different. I think it should count as a regular circulation, you know, like this item is checked out. But they look at it a different way because of that model. Program attendance was really good. Happy to see that. Murders Mondays had a little bit of a dip. I think it's because that was a little bit of a harder, rougher book, but we'll see how tonight is. It's still a really great group and we had a really great discussion, so I'm still happy with it. Melissa Ferreira has been accepted and appointed by the Select Board to the vacant library aid one part-time position. She'll be starting tomorrow. This hiring finally brings the library back up to all staffed and approved positions being filled for the first time since the end of February. Bonnie, Amy and Dan are all settling in nicely to their new positions and responsibilities. The last five months has probably been the single largest staffing change in at least the last six years, if not longer. The change to the fine and fee schedule is now active as of Tuesday, May 30th, so that is in place and it's been working. We have requested that the Sales Library Network allow people to opt in to having what their holds are listed in their email notifications. That went away last year because of privacy concerns that the network have. And a lot of people complained about it because they liked seeing what was waiting for them on the shelf. So we've asked for them to make an option where you can choose to have what sent told to you anyways. It's one of those things that a lot of companies and businesses now are getting away from that. Amazon's done the same thing. A bunch of other big companies have too, just for privacy reasons. But we'll see how it goes. Unfortunately, that's a network-wide policy, so everybody has to vote on it and accept it before we can make it happen. And we already talked about that. The benches in the amphitheater were oiled. If you haven't gone, go check it out. They look fantastic. I actually took a photo, I think I showed a couple of you, last week on Wednesday. All the benches were filled with kids after school, all hanging out there and reading on their phones, playing, talking, whatever. Completely filled. It was absolutely fantastic. So it was really, really cool to see. Mr. Bowen, Patrick Bowen, was the coordinator of that particular project on the Diamond side. He's absolutely fantastic. I'm very impressed with that gentleman. We've talked about a number of other projects, including they wanted us to make sure to keep them in mind when we do the pump house. Because they said that they like cross-programmed projects where they can pull in all of Diamond, including installing the pressure tank and the whole nine yards. With the closing of the school year, they said they're trying to get to, you know, as many projects as possible. We were in discussion for them to do our landscaping, but they can't fit it into the end of the school year. They are still going to try and patch the stucco on the back of the building if they can. They said they, basically they're just going to blow in insulation and they're just paint over it. But we'll see. But yeah, and then we currently are in talks having, trying to have a bunch of landscaping companies come in, give us a price for the mulch and cleaning up our garden areas.
Do you think Joseph would have a recommendation for landscaping? He had someone help him do some of the work before.
Yeah, that was his friend Elizabeth Reed.
Yeah, that's my uncle. So I felt a little uncomfortable. I didn't want to approach him for a quote for the family issue because of that, but.
You think it's a conflict of interest?
It could be. And that was one of those things. So I was trying to approach other companies instead just because of that. There's like paperwork, you have to file a declaration of familial connection, yada yada. The other one wasn't funded through the town, it was funded through the thing, so it wasn't an issue. But yeah. And then a couple of the firms also can do patio work, so if, I'm also going to have them give us quotes to do the lunch area out back in the southeastern quadrant of the garden.
Is that where the bench is now?
Right now it's still next to the shed.
So where do you want it?
Where the, the garden area that's in between where the storage container is and the building proper. So in my head, the way that I have it sketched out is having two kind of like mini garden areas around the two holly bushes on either end, then having the center area paved, and then having pavers kind of cordon those two off. I haven't sketched it out yet, but it should work, depending on the measurements of that actual paved patio area, either with pavers or straight concrete. Well, I haven't gotten that far yet. Either donations or through the expansion gift account, depending on what the final cost is. There also was, Nancy suggested that you can actually also apply for pro bono projects through Loews. So we could try to apply for that to see whether or not Loews would actually donate the labor and materials. So that's another potential.
Yeah, they, they did some work at the museum for us once. They come in on a Saturday or whatever and they put in so many hours.
So that might be an option too. That's what I got.
Pretty good, George. Sister. Bonnie?
We had the first grade classes come last week in May. And it's about 144 people in all, including classes and teachers. There's six classes in line, so they came home three different days, two classes per day. I got the story. They got a tour of the library and then they're going to have to pick out books. And they picked up their new library cards. Now, a lot of kids actually had library cards already, which was very exciting. Did very nicely, spent about two weeks putting those all the way apart. We're going to start summer reading and meet for tomorrow, I think. And we're going to start with the family story time and baby and toddler time. The baby and toddler is the same thing we've been doing all along for the family story time. We used to have just three to five-year-olds on Tuesdays.
Excuse me?
Since it's summer, siblings can come together and it'll be just zero through six. So we'll see how that works out, having all the ages together. And then the week of July 10th, we're going to add in bedtime stories on Thursday nights. So we'll sing lullabies, read some stories, see how that goes.
Is that new?
I think Linda had done it a couple of times last summer.
We had to start, well, no, it was last fall, before the Omicron spike. It was a new project or program we had started in fall of 20, was that '20 or '21? I forget off the top of my head, but it was my first fall here. And we went, I think that one was either October through December, once a month. And then when the Omicron spike hit, we didn't bring it back.
They come in their jammies?
Yes, they can run stuff to handle and should be fun. And then Tuesday afternoons, we're going to have family movies. So there's a schedule at the desk for anybody who's interested in that. And that's going to go through August 18th, and that's pretty much the end of summer reading. And then weekly, we're going to have making tape craft kits that the kids can come and either make it here or just take the kit home with them if they want. And we're going to do book bingo. So we have two different versions. There's one through NBLC. They do it with the Boston Bruins, so there's like a whole set with that. And then there's one I made that's slightly different, so it's, you know. Book bingo, it's basically a bingo card, and it has different, read a book outside, read a book about a place you've ever been. There's all sorts of different cards on it.
Did it last summer?
Yes, yeah, we've done that at least last summer, maybe the summer before. So instead of just making a giant list of books in front of, you know, it's doing some different things. So far, the kids have liked it. We did it last year. So that's going to go through the end of August also, and then we have prizes. When they fill in a row, they can come in and pick out a prize. And then new this year, we're going to do the plus and minus photo contest. That was a last minute attention. So we've already gotten our first entries. I was very excited. So they're going to be hanging up on the table section for the summer. And then people can come in and vote. Then we'll put numbers on them and then they can put, you know, some sort of token in a cup that matches the number. And then I contacted some local pet stores to see if I could get any donations for a prize book. If that doesn't work out, FAL will usually help us out with that. So that is basically summer reading.
Will the prize go to the pet or the person?
Oh, it depends. It's probably going to be a gift card to Petco or something.
That's what they share.
Yeah.
For the record, the prize is not a pet. Make sure we're all on the same page.
Does this calendar, this is for everybody, by the way? Or all different bets for the room?
Most of them. There's a couple of groups that asked to be left off. They didn't want anybody or everybody showing up to their meetings. So this is currently everyone as of right now who wants to be on the list.
What kind of group doesn't want to be on the calendar?
There's a couple of groups who they've, for example, there's a poetry group that is concerned about having too big of a group or having new people just randomly showing up because sometimes they do share personal pieces. So for them, they, you know, they are open to anyone who comes, but they don't want to.
So they're on here but not on here?
They're not on there, but.
What days are they on?
Every other Wednesday, I think. And then there's also a scrimshaw group, which, you know, they're more of a academic research group, that they have people come in and they look at different pieces that they're not on there too, just because, you know, they, that's more specialized and you have to kind of book a slot with them to make sure that they have time to look at your pieces. But we have their contact information if someone's interested.
I like the flyers, very nice. Who we got? George, I guess you're going to do the Friends update.
So the, this past Saturday, they had the Friends, which we'll talk about next month, meeting, but we've now started hitting the summer programming schedule for the Friends. So they had the Beatrix Potter lecture this past Saturday, which I've been told was well attended. The next big program is the Tuesday after the 4th. We're having Candida Rose and Band over at the Town Hall Annex, which is Cape Verdean music. It's a very different program than we've ever really done before, so make sure to tell everybody. It's at 6:30, I think. Because they all think I'm crazy.
What's, what's the name of it?
Candida Rose. She's a singer out of, well, she's, I think primarily out of New Bedford, but she travels all around. She's fantastic. But she's going to be doing Cape Verdean music with her band. So it's going to be out behind the Town Hall Annex, that, you know, band stage they have. So bring lawn chairs, picnic table, bench, blanket.
Who's putting this on the Friends?
It's Friends with also support from the Cultural Council.
And I'm sorry, what date is that?
That's the Tuesday after the 4th, so I think it's the 7th, 10th, yeah. At 6:30, I believe. So it's, it's a different program, a different project, so we're going to see how this goes. But we're trying to tell everybody because if it doesn't go well, I don't want to lose any innovative drive amongst the Friends.
Cape Verdean music at the Annex.
But we'll see.
So it's being put on by Fowl and the Arts Cultural?
So basically, the way that the Cultural Council funds projects, you have to front the money and then they reimburse as much as they'll reimburse. Then that's approved by the Cultural Council, depending how many other applications they get for different projects throughout town.
And do they usually reimburse the whole amount?
Depending on how much they approve beforehand. Same thing with our bench project, you know, they would pay for, was it two benches, I think, they did for us?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, they'll approve beforehand how much money, up to X amount and up to X expenses. There's some stuff that they won't cover.
And what time did you say this was going to?
I believe it's 6:30.
At 7:00?
The, I think it's the 10th. It's a week after the 4th.
It's the 11th.
11th, thank you. And then we do have a second communication from the Friends, which we'll keep saving until we get to new business. The other thing to note is that we are now accepting donations for the book sale, so if anybody has any books, DVDs, anything along those lines, audiobooks that they want to bring in for the sale. No encyclopedias, no textbooks, no tapes, and no microwave cookbooks. And then the first paperback book sale will be the end of August, I'm sorry, end of July, beginning of August. And then the annual book sale proper with paperbacks and hardcover books will be in September, the week of Labor Day, I believe. We have that date at the front desk, though. Oh, and they approved, that's true. And the Friends also, their last meeting approved getting the New England Aquarium pass, so we'll be adding that in FY24.
They did, they did approve it.
So FY24, we'll be adding that to our museum pass offerings. Yep, we dropped the Boston Children's Museum because nobody used it at all.
I wonder why? It's such a great museum.
I think it's just, you know, it's, it is a great museum, but it's one of those that with the drive with the kids, it's a little much for, you know, it's a fun place to go, but in terms of worth the drive, we do have the Providence Children's Museum, we do have the Fall River Children's Museum, we've got another one down on the Cape, so.
It doesn't take as much time there.
To go through it, yeah. It's a long ride for a short, yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's fun. I love, I went there myself. It's really, they have after-hour adult fundraisers. And I actually went to the best Halloween party I've ever been to in my life there. It's also the most money I've ever spent on alcohol in one evening, but we won't talk about that on camera. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fun place, but I think that's the catch. It is a hike and then there is other things other than that, so.
Or local, yeah.
And, you know, that one was, I forgot to tell me how much money it was, but we were able to take that money and some others to, you know. The aquarium isn't cheap. That's one of the reasons we, you know, haven't had it for some time. But personally, it's one of those that I don't mind paying a little bit extra for because it does go to pay for the animals, upkeep and everything. And they have a very robust education program there for people entering zoology, for the interns and all of that. So it's one of those that even if the museum pass is a little bit more expensive, at least that one is justified as opposed to some of them, like why do they charge as much as they do?
Because they can.
And it takes time when you're there.
That's a place where you can literally spend an entire day for, to go through, or personally, I could just spend the entire day standing right in front of the cuttlefish tank. All of those things. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm focusing.
Trustee subcommittee update. Laura? Well, we'll do yours first, Laura.
Safety.
Okay, we'll do safety. We'll get together soon.
Okay.
I've got some stuff I'll send you. Do you want to look at it?
Yes.
Okay, not long range.
Thanks to George and Bonnie, the survey was solidified and distributed, or I'm not so sure it was distributed.
We're working on it. So it's been at least digitally made available. So it's currently now live on the website. We have flyers and hard copies available here. The Friends, we're working on getting them distributed. They got a little swamped with the number of flyers and posters to go out across the town. So we're hoping sometime this week to have that happen. We'll see how that goes.
You also want to put it on Shoreline or something in the paper?
I wasn't sure if we settled on that or not.
I think Sue Sekie sent an email out saying she saw QR codes in the Shorelines.
Oh, did she? No, I didn't see it.
And she asked if we could do it as well in the Shorelines.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Shoreline, see if we can do it.
Yeah.
What about the town with everything Westport? Should we put it on there? You know which one I'm talking about?
I know, yeah.
Yeah, we could have a link from that.
Just a little blurb with a link.
Because people read that.
And then you said it's a Westport Facebook.
Who runs it?
I don't know.
Everything Westport. I think there's a little thing that says Walden Hill Realty.
John Alden.
Is there another one, Westport Community?
That's the same one.
Oh, it's the same one?
Yeah, it's kind of got two different names. I can't hear Jay.
So is it private or public?
You, if you like it, you, you see it.
Yeah. Last time I checked, we're already at about
I'm not a techie.
15 or 20 survey applica, uh, submittals, which the last time we did this, the entire submission, what am I saying? The last time we did the long-range plan, the entire survey population was only about 103, so we're already like almost, you know, a quarter of the way to matching as many surveys as we got back last time. So it's going well so far.
And we keep, you know, two months, right?
Yeah. So that will, hopefully we'll catch not only the year-round folk, but also some of the summer folk coming in too.
I hope we get a good response on what people are looking for.
There was, it's been interesting. I went around and I grabbed all of the school kids who are hanging out in here too on Thursday and Friday, and so they were working on it.
Where is the survey? On the library website?
If you go to our website, on the right-hand side, under News and Announcements, there's a link. Click that, it'll bring you over to it. But yeah, it's a little work if you would rather prefer. We do have it in print here at the library. If you want to be super fancy, we also have a QR code, which if you look at it with your phone's camera, you can actually poke it and that'll bring you straight to the survey too, which I was very, very proud of.
That is impressive.
New business. George, Friends request?
Yes. So the Friends, after the alleged success of the Director's Search Committee, that's what you call self-deferential humor. And how well it's been going with the Long Range Planning Committee, the Friends would like to extend an invitation for a trustee liaison to come to their Board of Directors meetings. It's only one meeting every two months. Not, obviously, the, with the Friends bylaws restricts any person who is a trustee from being a member of their Board of Directors. But as an attendee or, you know, just a liaison, so that the trustees and the Friends have direct communications without necessarily needing to go through me. Not that they have a problem with me, but I do as well, yes.
So why don't we make you our liaison?
The idea is to have a trustee liaison, so that way, just to kind of like facilitate communication and collaboration between the two groups.
Kind of an oval.
Okay.
What do I have to do next?
Nothing. The next meeting, it's okay. I'll let you know when the next meeting is. It's, they just met in May, so it'll be, I think it's the third week in July. But I can double check on that and get you the date.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, George, you're up with budget.
Very good. So in front of you, in your packet, is the FY24 budget as currently approved. It's the highest budget the town's ever given us, so it's really, obviously, we could use more money.
George, what's under professional fees?
What is that?
Professional fees.
Professional services is the line we use to fund our membership in the Sales Library Network. In the past, it was referred to as data process, oh, no, I'm sorry. I tried to get it changed over to data processing, but it's still professional services listed in the town meeting list because that's what it's always been, so they thought it would be more confusing if we changed it. I'm going to keep working on that because I think it makes more sense to have it be more descriptive, but. The sales membership, yeah. So that's half of it. It actually costs 22 and change. If you have all of the different things we have to pay to be a part of Sales, that also covers the public internet line. We have two internet lines here at the library. One is the town line, one is the sales line, which takes care of the public computers and half of the which takes care of the public computers and half of the staff work computers. There are two different computer networks here in the building.
So it costs 22,000 a year?
Total, it's, it's a ballpark.
And where's the other 11?
The other 11 we usually use from state aid typically. Or from, I also sometimes use either donations that we get that go towards technology because that also pays for our Libby access for eBooks, or the LASH fund, because it's the same thing. Basically, that's our sales membership, which also includes the computer systems, the library catalog. All of that gets paid through from that membership fee.
Okay, and I don't see a line item on here for books.
No, the town puts no money towards the book budget unless you count the $11,000 that goes towards sales as being partially towards funding our eBook collection.
So the books come from the trust funds?
Trust funds or direct own, or, yes.
And do you know what we spent for books last year?
Currently, we have spent about fif-, I think we're at 51, and I'm waiting for the invoice to come in on the periodical subscriptions. So when everything's done, we're probably gonna be looking at around 55 to 56 for this year total.
Thousand?
Yep. Which is about 10K over the minimum we have to spend to maintain our certification with Boston. I'd like to get that lower so that our minimum and the amount we spend meet. We would have done it this year at least a little bit closer, except the $5,000 that we spent on the new computers goes towards that amount as well.
So the money from the trust is part of that money?
Yes. So basically, the way that the certi-, certification works, and this will come into play next year, is that to be a certified library in Massachusetts, we have to hit different benchmarks and different categories. One of which is with our population size, we're supposed to spend at least 15% of our municipal budget on books or the equivalent thereof. So next year in FY24, we're gonna have to spend at least about $50,000 to maintain that certification, which we should have the funds to do.
But again, that's money from the trust funds or-
Yep, and that's the thing. So as far as Boston's concerned, they don't care where the money comes from. That's just the amount we have to hit. So if the town doesn't give us the $50,000 to spend, then we have to, you know, get it from other places and at least spend the equivalent of what would be 15% of our budget on stuff that people check out.
So the money that does come from the town could go to books. It just doesn't because you have other?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a catch 22 because now it's a kind of a reinforcing spiral because we don't have any money in the library's budget to pay for books. So if the town put money to pay for books, it would also increase the library's budget unless they take it from somewhere else. And there's nowhere else that they can take the money without cutting something else that they're already underfunding anyways. So it's a snake eating its own tail.
We spent 55,000. How much did Friends spend on books?
Last, so I typically, as a rule, always try to spend last year's money this year to make sure we have enough to cover that requirement. So last year, the Friends donated about $35,000 to the library. There's also some stuff that they paid directly for us.
So is the majority of that 35,000 for books?
Yeah.
So that comes out of here?
Yes.
All right.
And then the remainder comes from other donations or the trust funds.
If we didn't have other, we wouldn't be certified.
No, and that's the thing. So, or we'd have to dramatically cut services in another area of the library to make up the difference. We'd have, you know, at that point, we might trigger one of the other aspects of certification, meaning minimum number of hours we have to be open, minimum number of days we have to be open. Or there's also a requirement that to be a certified library, your budget has to increase over 2.5%, more than the three-year average of your municipal budget, which all of those requirements we fully meet. If Fall River doesn't.
Yeah, some of my point for bringing that up is I know that a lot of the trust is very low. Interest only on lower.
And that's the thing. So if we spent ballpark, if we spent 2% or 3% of the trust funds so that they aren't depleted. And next year, I'm gonna play with them more. Last, the last two years, basically, I've tried to not touch the trust funds anymore than I had to to try and build them back up a bit. So next year, we use one particular trust fund called the Chadwick Fund for our large print or auto, or audiobooks. It was specifically donated for people with visual impairment. Probably going to let it cool off for the whole year to try and build up more interest. And that one, we do spend into the principal because it's not restricted. I'm worried about it getting too far below, just too far low. But if we only spent about 2% or 3% of all those trust funds added together to make sure that they aren't depleted too far, we'd only get about, you know, five to 10 grand out of all of them added together. And the problem that we also have with those trust funds is a lot of them are not only interest restricted, but also topic restricted. Some of them are only for children's books, mystery books, biography books, books that the intent was for first-time female authors. Things like that where then it's not only restricted to interest, so there's limits how much money you can spend, but what you can spend it on. And that's when it gets complicated sometimes.
I think in recent years, what, what the trustees talked about was talking to the people who were putting the trust together and asking them if they would do it a certain way so that we could have the freedom to do what we needed.
And at least the last two years, we haven't had anybody approach us about setting up a new trust. For the, at least since I've been here, it's, the bequests we've been getting are unrestricted general donations, which has made it easier, at least on the accounting side, for, you know, maintaining that certification. So it's been helpful. But we haven't got any big ones either, so.
How many books can we get for 50,000 dollars?
So right now, depending on the kind of book, ballpark, you're looking at about $10 for a hardcover fiction book, 20 to 35 for hardcover nonfiction, around 15 to 25 for a kid's hardcover book, depending on nonfiction book, or 7 to 10 for a kid's hardcover fiction book. Paperbacks, they're only like, you know, three or five bucks. But we try to avoid them, one, due to space, and two, because they fall apart really fast. So you wind up actually losing money on it. With a hardcover book, the over/under is if you can get it checked out more than seven times, you're making money on the book because that's the, at least that was the old math. Nowadays, they've actually switched over to using inferior glue and paper. So you're getting less checkouts out of a book, which the publishers say is because of the cost of the material. We all say they're trying to get us to buy more book replacements, but I digress. But yeah, so so far, the sweet spot is usually somewhere between five to seven checkouts to make money off of buying the book versus the number of times it gets checked out.
Next, we gotta do an appointment for the Director's Annual Evaluation. Who wants to be on that committee? I will.
How many do you need?
Three.
Do you have three?
One, two, did you?
Did you want to?
Do you want to? Um, yes, go.
Okay, so we got Sue. Sue?
That's it.
I'll get ahold of you. We'll sit down.
You guys have stuff from last year, right? Gotta see if we can dig it up.
When does it have to be done by?
It's up to you guys. It's, it's, it's the board's purview. So I mean, last year, I think we did it like halfway through July, but it's one of those things, just at least get the ball rolling on it.
Well, what we could do is after our next meeting, just stay a few extra minutes and go over it.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long to do. You'll do it after the next meeting?
Does it look like we're gonna need to replace him?
Well, we gotta wait and see what the committee says.
That's up to you all.
George, you know you're a breath of fresh air.
You can probably, I appreciate that. Although Bristol's looking. I mean, that's right down the road.
Okay, that's the discussion of library trustee meeting bylaw.
So this was our topic that was raised due to our discussion of whether or not to skip August and February. Since I've been here, it has been the practice of the board to meet 10 out of 12 months. Looking at the bylaws, though, that's not in there. So whether or not the board wants to put that practice into the bylaws or not, if we look under meetings, under Article 5, point one, regular meeting shall be held monthly at a time set by the board. Regular attendance is expected. A trustee is expected to give advance notice to the chair and/or library director whenever he/she cannot attend a meeting. As such, so currently, that practice trickled in at some point, and it's not actually in here.
I'm not sure it has to be in, in the bylaw. We, the trustees could just say we're gonna skip a month. If we feel it's necessary. If we don't feel it's necessary, we won't skip. It's, I'm a DFW, it's written that way there. There's nothing in there that we take a month off. We always take August off.
Why did we not meet February? Was it because weather?
Yes. And we met at night, and many people were not fond of going out at night in bad weather.
So if it says regular meetings shall be held monthly, doesn't that mean 12 times?
I guess unless the trustees decided otherwise.
I looked on the MBLC to see if they had any.
It's a town issue? So that's one of those things that we go up to in Wareham, in their trustee bylaws. It literally says 10 out of 12 months. So in there, they specifically say, but.
So which, which bylaws, wouldn't this trump that or not?
I don't think we have bylaws.
No, so do they? That's not bylaws. That's just-
But I mean, the, this being the MLB C.
So there's-
No, no, this is Westport's.
Right, but does it, do, who oversees it?
That doesn't cover it. But it's both. So basically, in Massachusetts, there is a balancing act between local bylaws and town charters or, in the lack of a charter, town bylaws, and the state law. Usually, the local ordinances, bylaws, town charters trump or kind of equal state laws. It's a really weird interaction between the two sometimes. But there's nothing that in there or at the state level that dictates how often the trustees have to be unless there is a town bylaw that specifies.
And this town has a bylaw that says-
First paragraph, it refers to and the bylaws of the town.
Right.
And also says provisions, Chapter 78, section 111.
And in the town bylaws, it doesn't have to say anything at all about trustees.
And it just probably has about meetings, not bylaw.
It might, but I didn't see anything that specifically focuses on us. So then at the town, as of right now, the governing document for the trustees is the trustee bylaws.
I'd like to table it for now, because we're gonna meet next March anyway.
Or whether you can put meet monthly or as needed?
Yeah, because it doesn't say anything about call especially.
We have to amend the bylaws to try that.
Yeah, that would be-
Chair or President George, you're the board members.
Should we go table that?
Table, please.
Very good.
Old business review meeting room policy.
So to ease the discussion, I broke it up into two different points. If you wanna take them one by one, because it might be a little bit easier.
Okay, Amy?
I also did manage to find a couple other libraries in, first in our area and in the state that do have a little bit of different procedure than we do and do have rental fees. The closest is Fall River. For profit groups are allowed to use their large meeting room space at $50 per meeting, or nonprofit groups for $10 per meeting. A small reading room fee is 25 per meeting or $5 for a nonprofit group. Bellingham, which is up north a bit of a ways, for nonprofit groups, they have $25 per hour. And for profit groups are $50 per hour.
How big is Bellingham?
I don't know. I'm not sure. I just grabbed the policy. I didn't, so I have to look at the library.
I just found the people in the town.
Yeah.
Small town, those big towns. I'm not sure.
And then Dartmouth, for profit groups during regular library hours are $50 per hour. For profit groups beyond regular hours at the North Dartmouth branch are $50 per hour. But they don't charge anything for nonprofit groups or town departments, boards and committees.
Do you have any idea what kind of use it gets?
Some do, yeah. The North Dartmouth meeting room is getting a good amount of use. The South Dartmouth meeting room gets a lot, but different programs, nonprofit groups, discussions, especially during the summer. Yeah, North Dartmouth is a little bit of a different animal because they designed that building so that you could use it after hours as well if the meeting goes long. That's why they specifically have that after-hours criteria in there for the North Dartmouth. But the North Dartmouth also has less meeting room space, so they don't, it's more restrictive when it's available to be used.
Is this what would be called a meeting room here?
Yes.
So this would be a room that we're deciding if it could be or should be rented or used out, used?
This would be a neutral room, just in that way.
Well, it's up to you. There's also the history room, which sometimes be used as a study room that people need a quiet space with a door, something like that, or for Zoom meetings.
I would probably see it just these two rooms.
Yeah.
History room has a lot of good stuff in there.
But if you had a small group and it was a class, I don't know, I don't know. That's, that's a nice space. If these rooms are being used.
Yeah, I, I kind of feel like we could leave that separate as opposed to just these two. That's kind of more like a case-by-case basis, if we need a space that that suits the user.
Um, I, the second half, the money then received is for the director and supplies. No one that leads classes gets paid. And in the past, that, some of them did, and that's changed.
What is your feeling? Want to use them as, um-
Well, the, right now, basically, currently, there are two different requests before the board for reconsideration of the meeting room use policy. So the first question is whether or not to allow a town department to use the space paid for by students to fund the program. And that's one thing, which is not currently allowed with our bylaw. It is currently written for the meeting room. They are allowed to accept donations for supplies, but they cannot accept payment, charge a registration fee, or restrict access to the meeting room space if they're using it. So that's one question. And the second one is, would you want to allow nonprofit groups that charge a registration fee and restrict access to a meeting in the library? If it is deemed to be educational or what have you, I think, but then it's, I would want to word that, it's up to you guys. So those are the two questions.
Do you think use of terms disrupts the library, how's it, for its regular use? No. So you think it's a good idea to use them? Just how do you use them?
Well, that's the question, is whether, in the past, the board has had the opinion and put that into policy that the room should only be used for nonprofit, no-revenue, nonprofit group, local to the town, and only available for free access and only available to universal access. So you can't say somebody can't come to a meeting. You can't charge to get into the room. And you can't make money off of using the meeting room spaces, the current policy as written. There's only three exemptions. The Friends of the Library and the, where Westport Historical Society are allowed to accept donations, as well as a town committee is allowed to accept donations to offset the cost of supply specifically, and that's it. So whether or not the board wanted to create, or amend the policy to allow for the two other situations is at the discretion of the board, or if it's working well enough the way that it is, you can say, no, believe it how it is.
And so what was the approach to change? Well, what, not rules specifically, but what, like, why is this being discussed?
So the Recreation Department was interested in using one of our meeting rooms for a program during the summer for like an instructional tennis class, like teaching kids skills and things like that.
That was only if it didn't rain.
No, there was a class that they were interested in having here, and they were also asking if they could book the room in case they needed to move the kids in here because of rain. So there was two different things they were asking for.
I don't agree with movement against of rain because what if it's being used? If you can't. And then all the other times I've had classes, if it rains, you just go home and come back the next day. But that, you can't reserve a spot for them.
A little bit like a just-in-case spot, like a-
Some people, I mean, we do have, the Historical Society does that now for some of their programs that are outside.
And we could say if the room is available.
Yeah, but I, I would agree with that. I don't wanna say that, okay, on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, the room is set aside in case it rains. It's crazy.
Well, look at the schedule.
And that you're not-
And that you're not, everybody is not here. So you don't necessarily have that space available.
No, and that's, that's part of the thing, is whether or not it would be available or block it out particular days. But the way that the policy stands right now, they couldn't do it anyways because they charge a registration fee for the program.
I think when we enlarged the space, we doubled the size of the community room. When we did the expansion, we had so many people that wanted to use the room that we, we had to, I was trying to figure back how it all happened. And I think part of it was so many people wanted, they wanted to do yoga classes, they wanted, and it was just, you know, became strict. But that might, at this time, not be the way to go.
Yeah, but because if you're doing yoga classes, you're charging a fee.
Exactly.
And that's the same with the group that used this room the last time that we had the issue, that these people were paying to take this class. And we're not supposed to be doing that.
No, that is not.
And they got away with that, and now they wanna come back again.
They, we had someone getting paid?
Well, no, that was the second half. So it was, you know, they were paying the registration fee.
Oh, the registration fee.
Called the second half, that they're a nonprofit that has classes.
Oh, that teacher was, because the instructors don't get paid.
When they put in their application to use this meeting room space, the flyer that I saw said free class. There was the, if you took the class as a Zoom class, it was free. They still had to pay a registration fee for the class otherwise, but that wasn't on the flyer that I saw. So I fully admit that was my fault for them getting in here. But half the class attendees were Westport residents that loved having the class here, so they didn't have to drive out of town. And the two classes were library related. One was on Russian literature, the other was on film. So it did suit the literary and cultural purview of the library's collection. It did boost meeting room use, it did boost circulation, it did boost attendance to the library, so whether or not.
But there was an issue.
Couldn't you pass it back to the organization and say it's available, but you.
But that's the thing, as of right now, it's not available under the current policy. So that's the question.
Because of the fee.
Because of the fee.
But if they drop the fee, then that is no longer.
The door, probably wouldn't teach it.
Yeah. But if the policy was tight because we had so many people wanting to use.
There's a way to make it more relaxed.
And I, I think second half is, is not really for profit, it's an educational service and most of the members. But I also advocate strongly for Westport Recreation, which provides lots of services to the people of Westport based on people's needs, what they contact data steward and say they want. And it's not like Westport Recreation is for profit.
Well, the second half, is that playing up the second?
Second half.
Second half, is that through West Recreation?
Well, no, that's.
Two different things.
That's the thing, that's why I was trying to break it up.
Yes.
It's two different topics.
I don't, I don't have an issue with playing tenders that it rains, they come over here. I don't think that's a problem.
Well, they have the gym.
Well, in case, so they're over there. So the, there was basically, Recreation had approached us that back in, was that April or May, beginning of May, with two requests. One was they were interested in having a classroom style instructional class here on like tennis essentials or something like that, like an instructional kind of program. And then also looking into booking the meeting room space on particular days for three weeks during the summer. In case they have a rain out day, they would move inside the library and do instructional work instead of that, so they didn't have to just scratch the.
Not like batting balls around.
As far as I know.
That's what I wondered, like, how do you play tennis?
But the way that the policy is currently written, the only fees that a town committee, which if we accept, you know, the department under the committee has the authority under, but I won't get into that, is to accept donations in lieu of supplies, not staffing.
No, I would have a problem with holding the room when they were outside.
Yeah.
So that, that.
No, I would think they could use it, we can't hold it for them. If it's available, they could use it.
Right, only if it's available and it's raining.
You can't book it, you can't book both.
Right, right. Well, the Recreation Department mustn't be for profit either.
It's not.
No, the people teaching the classes get paid.
But they, but the.
They're kind of a supply then.
Could be.
You can kind of.
We've never run into that before.
Never had a recreation.
Never had a recreation.
And that's the thing too, so the Recreation Department in town, the town only pays the Director of Recreation. The entire rest of everything they do is from the program fees. So that, it's a revolving account that that money goes into, that pays the instructors, that pays for any supplies that they get from the program. There is no town budget for it other than that. So.
They have the gym.
And rental from the gym fees.
No, but I mean, they have the gym.
They can use that space all the time.
If it's raining.
But then it's a matter of getting from here over to there.
So we're talking primarily about tennis?
Yeah, let's, let's do one of them at a time. I think in tennis.
So we're talking about tennis with the tennis.
Right now, it's purely philosophical because we've already gone too far into the summer, so that class was scratched. So it's, right now, it's purely theoretical. Down the road, if we are approached by any town department to have a, for example, if Conservation wants to pay to have a lecturer come in for the piping plover conservation or something like that, currently, the way that the bylaws written, we won't allow that because someone is getting paid.
Unless the friends sponsor it.
Unless what?
The friends sponsor it. If they do it through the friends.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you'd have to do that, though. I mean, if this. Conservation company or our organization is paying for it. The individual people coming are not paying. Right?
Well, the way that, the way that this is written right now, they have a person who is paid, they're making money off of the lecture. That would not be an allowed program.
That seems poorly worded to me. I think it would be great to have lecturers, whether they get paid or not.
Right now, it's only.
If the town people come to the lecture, they're not paying for it.
It might have to be a case by case. What?
I think we really.
And we sponsored it, it's allowed. So if we add it ourselves onto as a sponsor of the event, then it's permitted. But if a nonprofit or another town department pays for a person to man or staff or run or do a lecture, anything like that, that would not be permitted.
Well, can't we change the bylaws to make it be permitted if it's a town?
It's just a policy.
Yeah, but that's the question, is whether or not, or keep it the way it is right now.
I don't think we should change anything right now because we have too many opinions. I think we need to come back to it. Myself, I think we need to look at what we wanna do. Because we have to be careful, opening up the policy, it opens it up big time.
Yes.
We're gonna open it up, I think we need to open it up a little bit, see how it works, and maybe expand it.
Could we say, like, just town organizations? Wouldn't that keep it pretty tight? A town department?
No, because it's not a matter of which organization, it's a matter of who's getting paid, who's making money.
But they don't, we could exempt that as a requirement, that the Recreation Department could use the library room because it is a town department. And they can't offer their services if they don't pay their instructors.
But it's too late.
But we could change that.
But you don't know what's coming in the future.
Don't the students pay the instructor?
Yes.
The students pay registration fee that goes to the town, and then the instructor gets paid by the town.
So they pay to use the gym.
The town, Recreation Department?
They rent the gym.
They rent the gym.
Yeah, I've used it.
They don't rent it, do they?
Who?
The Recreation Department uses it for nothing, right?
I, as a resident, have used it, and I've paid $25 an hour to.
The only ways that the Recreation Department gets funds is the town pays the director. The town, the Recreation Department then has what's called a revolving fund that registration fees for the programs and rental fees from the gym go into. That pays for all of the other programs and contract staff that are not town employees that put on the different programs that the Recreation Department puts on throughout the whole year.
So is the gym not available to them? That's where I've taken all my classes.
Well, I think it's more of looking at more places that they could have classes.
Well, I can see tennis if it's adjacent to the tennis court.
And they don't pay anything to use the tennis courts.
So I, I could see that, but I. Holding the room if they're gonna be outside, because someone else could be using it. It's.
Well, that's why I think that would be, they could use the room if it's available.
If it's available.
But then the, the other side of the coin is if they did wanna have some other kind of class or program or lecture here that is a paid, you know, whatever, currently, they can't because of the way that the policy is written. Or back in the day when the COA wanted to use this space for an art class or something like that, that's barred too, with the way that the policy is currently written.
And that was because of the number of hours and they needed to use the kitchen facility and, and it was.
Personally, wouldn't be too hot on having paint in here anyways, so I probably would.
That became a, a maintenance issue as well.
So how do these programs, just looking at this first row, Mahjong?
Those are nonprofit community groups. So those are all. That anybody can come, there is no fee, there is no registration. So they're, they're pure local nonprofit community groups.
I think they're just groups, they're not nonprofits, right?
Well, that's, they, they are nonprofit, they're, they don't profit.
But they're, okay.
So it's just community, people meeting up to do that particular activity.
What is it?
Mahjong is kind of like dominoes, but different.
So it's just people, nobody in use it, play, play your game?
Yeah, although, to be fair, I did tell them if there's any actual money changing hands, the library wants 10%. But I've never caught them.
I'm doing a display case in August with my Mahjong sets.
Are you?
Oh, me?
They're, they're interesting. I mean, we actually had two different Mahjong clubs meeting here. The second one is not here for the next five months because during the summer, they actually meet down at the Yacht Club instead, which I'm better over here, it's mine. And then the Bridge Club is one of the other ones that meets here regularly every Wednesday.
I think they've been here for like thirty, forty years.
Really, if you thought about it, these are just a small amount of people getting use of a public entity. And then when you say things like recreation and or second half would be a much more diverse or expansive group of people having access, which.
Yeah, it's a different way of looking at it.
Yeah, it almost makes sense to invite more.
Class, I think, was sort of between 10 and 20 people each.
But then the next program would be different with 10 or 20 different people.
But the way that the second half does it is that it's by semester. So when they booked the space, it was for, I think it was three months or two, two and a half months, something like that.
But one day a week?
Yeah.
And some groups are small and some groups are not.
Second half, it was the same thing, but with these, I mean, it all, there's no minimum size for a group to reserve the space. So I mean, the, the Bridge Club, I mean, they, depending on the week, there are some weeks where they don't have anybody that shows up at all because of just, you know, their, different things come up, what have you, and then they've had to.
That would be a rainy day, and then the tennis kids could come in.
And that's one of those things. Until the day out, depending on how many people show up. But I mean, that could only be, you know, four people to a table, or it could be nobody, or it could be, I think the entire time I've been here, the biggest date they have was eight or nine.
Now, they reserve this room from 12 to 3 on Wednesdays, the Bridge Club.
So most of the clubs that we.
They do this on Wednesdays. What if somebody wanted to use that room and they didn't show up? You don't, you said you don't know until they, until they show up, then.
Yeah.
So they're reserving a room, then a week ago, somebody else can't reserve that space. Because they've, they've gotta reserve. That doesn't seem right either.
So most of the groups that we have that are longstanding groups, they basically have a, we have a standing, understanding that they will be meeting, so it's kind of like a continual kind of thing.
Kind, kind of, kind of.
Yes, and that, that's the practice. The Bridge Club, the Mahjong Club, the, you know, castoffs, they've been meeting here for years.
So do we know that they need like 70 or 80% of the time, and it's rare for them not to need?
Most of the time, yeah, that's one of those things, but some of the clubs are getting, they're not having replacement numbers in terms of having new people joining the club, so that's an issue with some of them.
The Bridge Club used to have five or six tables all the time.
Yeah.
So it's a new trend, and the trend might be that if you. Or coordinating programs that the town actually benefits from and not just a select small group.
When I think about Westport Recreation.
They do babysitter training groups, they, they do all kinds of things that people in this town want. And maybe most of the time, they can use the annex, but this is a lovely room to meet in for groups like that. And it's usually pretty short, like, like two or three sessions or even one session.
If the second half were to use a room, who sets up?
It depends. Do they set up? So most.
Set up like tables and chairs?
Who sets it up and then puts stuff away, because then that's, that became an issue too.
Yeah, well, we've been trying, unfortunately, it's one of the things I've been trying to change, is in the past, our staff does all the setup for all the groups using the meeting room spaces, which I'm not hot on.
Right.
So that's something that I've been trying to move us away from. Any new groups that have been using the room since I've started have been told that they are responsible for setting themselves up.
So are these lighter tables and easier to set up, or are these the old ones?
Well, these are the current tables. The old tables are in the closet and do not get used because they're crazy.
But these are easy to set up, so people coming in could set up.
Yeah.
They're very heavy.
These aren't the new plastic tables?
No, these, these are the old ones. The, the ones that got the new tables replaced for are the heavier ones that are even heavier than these.
Can we add to the meeting room policy that the groups are responsible for their own setup and cleanup? I don't know that we have it.
Well, you also, you also have another issue there that you have to think about is if somebody gets hurt on one of these tables, the town is liable, unless you have a policy that says that.
Oh, it's, um, I didn't check the liability waiver, if that's in there or not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you might have been. Yeah, the waiver of liability.
I'm not sure if it specifies setting up or not, and I just have to double check it. But there is a liability waiver that every group has to sign to.
Because that's an extra job for Roland.
Yeah.
I know, I know they can't pay for it, but could they do a donation?
Asking for donation is asking for a fee.
If you clean up, does a $10 donation do that? I don't know, I just. I think the policy needs addressed.
Other than the town recreation and second half, has there been any interest?
Well, I guess the other, there have been groups that I turned away from not being. We have some business folks that are, people that would like to use the meeting room for meeting with clients, things like that. Obviously, that's pure for profit, that was declined.
That we usually.
There was someone from Luke Cross Blue Shield that was interested in having an informational session on different healthcare policies and things like that, that was declined because obviously he gets charged, paid a commission for that. I feel the topic, there've been a couple other instances that were rejected for that same, for those kind of issues.
When I was on the Long Term Building Committee, we'd been here.
Well, that's a town committee.
That's the town committee, it was nice to have a place to go to.
It's, it's tough, because there are some libraries that they have been opening up their meeting room spaces and, you know, transitioning to what they call, you know, entrepreneurial incubators, so like allowing businesses started to use meeting room spaces or study spaces to get businesses going, which that is something else we could look at at some point. It all depends on the usage set by the trustees, the ideas for the library, things like that.
That's how, that's how we started with restrictions. People wanted to put on classes for people with the understanding that they would get.
Get paid.
Yes. And they would get people who would wanna take their classes or join their group and, and we couldn't, we didn't feel that was right.
And so basically, it's just the exchange of money, that's the, that's the deterrent?
Currently, that's one of the ways we understand it. And also whether or not you're, you have local ties. So if somebody came in from Bellingham or from Medford and wanted to use this space for some particular reason, if it wasn't, you know, necessarily Westport related, you know, just to use the meeting room space for the sake of a space, if it's halfway in between two other, you know, towns, that wouldn't be allowed. Had to have some kind of tie or interest to Westport.
So we're no further along.
I think we could be here all day, so what I'd like to know, I think, I'd like to go look. I think we could be here all day, so what I'd like to know, I think, I'd like to go look at other town libraries. You have two here?
I have three.
You have three?
Yeah. There's a Hall River too.
I would personally like to go look at half a dozen of these myself and kind of analyze what everybody else is doing. And maybe we can come back with a kind of a group consensus. Because I really don't know what other towns are going to do, you showed me this.
Do we need a subcommittee or just have it as part of the regular meeting?
Well, I mean, in the bylaws, it does mention there can be a facilities committee at the interest of the board or the chair, if you wanted to do it that way. But it's, it's, the problem is that it's, not necessarily a problem, but there's a bunch of different ways different people are doing it, depending on what the board wants to allow the meeting room to be used for. And that's why the step one is kind of figuring out what you feel okay for using the meeting room space and is not, and then working back from there. Some towns, you charge per use, some towns it's per hour. Some towns, it's a cut of the revenue or money collected. It all depends. When I was in Dartmouth, they actually also were able to do art shows. And then the library would get 10% of the revenue collected from that. There have been people, especially with Westport being the art community that it is, there have been interests in artists having shows that they could sell their pieces from, which is not currently allowed as well. And the library could see that as a potential revenue stream as well.
When the Westport Art Group building was being refurbished, they needed a space for the art show. And the board was really divided on allowing them to use this space because they were making profit. But we did it as a one time only because the show is something that's part of Westport and people on the board and in the community were part of the art group. But we, it was a one time only.
What is the, what is the challenge with the money?
We did not get any money for.
What is the challenge with, why is there a concern of if someone makes, like an artist makes money?
Well, because.
Or a facilitator makes money?
The town, the library isn't getting any. You know, it's, it's profit, that's for profit.
Yeah, and it's a not, it's a, what is the free in the Westport Free Library?
Free access. So basically, the Westport Free Public Library name, the free and the public are holdovers from 100 years ago when those words had more meaning because there were more varieties of types of libraries. There were some libraries that you had to pay a subscription to, to have access, just to enter the building. You had to pay money to get in or you had to pay money to have borrowing rights. Us being free means that you didn't have to pay. Us being public meant that we were paid by the government, by the municipal government, directly funded by the taxpayers of the municipality. Where there are still some libraries that are free libraries, but they're not public. For example, if you go down to Brewster, there's the Brewster Ladies Library, which was a private group that then made the library that they had controlled over and owned open to the public as a public library. And there are still many towns in Massachusetts where they have a blended system where the town will contribute some money to the library, but it's owned by a separate, owned and managed by a separate nonprofit. Which Laura can speak to a lot more than I can.
Fair Haven has an interesting.
Yeah, Fair Haven is a really weird bag of cats.
Like, yeah, water department or something.
So Henry Huddleston Rogers was a very rich man who donated a lot of stuff to Fair Haven and literally funded and created the water department, which at the time was a separate company, a water company, which was created for the benefit of the town of Fair Haven with the understanding that part of the profits from the water department would perpetually go to funding the library, which he endowed and built in memory of his daughter. When the town took over the water department in the 60s, there was an act of the legislature requiring a certain formula of funding from the town to go to the library in lieu of the revenue the library would have otherwise gotten from the water company. And because of that, to this day, the town owns the building, but the library is managed and run by a separate nonprofit. That's why in Fair Haven, the library ran out a pride flag last June, whereas the flag was banned from all town buildings otherwise because they didn't actually control the library staff.
Okay. I could table this until next meeting. I would like for everybody to do some research on what they want to see in this. And then we'll put it together, or if we need to do a committee to put it together, we'll do so at that time. Library amphitheater walkway and well.
I don't have anything new to report at this time.
I got an email from Scott. He said it may be months because this is his busy time of the year. I said, can you just give us some ballpark numbers so we could go ahead and apply for the money? And I haven't heard back from him. I'm going to look around, see if there's anybody else that does this type of work. Because like, if we have to wait for him to, two or three months to get back to it, we'll be into next year again, we'll be right back where we started.
Yeah, we should dedicate the, the benches during the century.
Looked at the drawings that were given, he said, I said, do you need to talk to the guy or anything? He said, no, actually, I see the drawings. I have to get up there and do some stuff myself.
Well, where we already are, it's like, I don't even know now if we started the project, if we'd have time to get it done before the winter season came.
Well, if we know what it's going to cost, if we get the funding in place, then we can do it next year, whatever we want.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, other topics not anticipated.
What about the doors? What about the doors?
The door, that's a part of our safety committee.
Ah, okay. Let's say we're that for now, thank you.
I saw, I saw somebody else had a hard time getting in here this morning, it was about 10 past 11.
No, it's definitely something.
Oh, Sue wasn't here last month, you should tell her about, you were helping that woman with the walker.
Yeah.
Oh, I've helped people come through that door as well.
I did today because the lady had a cane and she couldn't pull the door.
The door's heavy.
And I don't even think she knew, there's a button all the way on the other side.
When we do that project, I definitely would like to also include getting another door opener for the women's room too, just so everyone's on the same page.
Yeah.
Currently with the bathrooms, the men's room has a handicap automatic door opener, but the women's room doesn't.
Well, maybe we could use the one that's out there in there. The button part, the button part should be the same, the mechanisms are different, but. We will be getting together soon. Motion to adjourn? Anybody?
Yes.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.